Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to our Mesa City Council meeting for the evening of January the 10th of the year 2022. All members of our council are present. The council chambers are open to the public and we will take comments in person. Also, you can provide comments on items on our agenda over the telephone or the internet. You can find multiple ways to participate in this meeting on the first page of our council agenda. We'll begin our meeting this evening with an invocation offered by Reverend Stephen Resner with Eternal Life Lutheran Church. He'll be appearing via Zoom. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Resner? Pastor Resner, are you with us on via Zoom? I believe you're muted, Pastor.
Here we go. Now, do you have me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty, everlasting Father, we approach your throne of grace and mercy to give you thanks for the blessings you have given to us this past year. We pray, dear Father, that you would continue to grant your grace and your blessings to us in this new year, even though we deserve nothing. We pray that you would grant your wisdom to rest upon all elected and appointed officials in our city as they deliberate and make decisions that affect the daily lives of its citizens. Continue to protect all emergency personnel and all city employees. Grant that they may do their work without added stress or anxiety. And finally, we ask that you bless all the residents, that they may live their lives in peace and in quiet. These blessings we ask of your mercy. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Resner. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to take action on the consent agenda. We'll now invite Ms. Lilly King forward to please read the consent agenda.
Hi, Mayor and Council. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted on with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on as a separate item. Item two, approval of minutes of previous meetings as written. Item three A, act on liquor license application for Asian Chamber of Commerce, one-day event, January 29th, 1920 West Broadway Road. Item three B, act on liquor license application for tobacco, beer, and more, 4355 East University Drive. Item three C, act on liquor license application for 414 Pub Pizza and Karaoke, 706 West Southern Avenue. Item four A, act on one-year renewal and one-year renewal option to the contract for ground maintenance, equipment, parts, accessory supplies, related services, and equipment for the Parks Recreation and Commercial Facilities departments. Item four B, act on one-year renewal to the term contract for landscape maintenance and services for parks, retention basins, and sports fields. Item four C, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for bee and other stinging insect removal services for the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities and Water Resources departments. Item four D, act on five-year term contract for an outdoor cellar network, citizen broadband access to underserved areas of West Mesa. This purchase is funded by the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Item four E, act on use of cooperative contract for a three-year term and renewal options for custom badgings for the Mesa Police Department. Item four F, act on contract to purchase one portable X-ray system for the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is grant-funded by the Arizona Department of Homeland Security. Item four G, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for iron sights for Glock weapons for the Mesa Police Department. Item four H, act on one-year term contract with four years of renewal options for safety and medical supplies for the Mesa Police Department. Item four I, act on contract to purchase Axon Interview File Mitigation for the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is funded by the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. Item four J, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for coated steel pipe for the Energy Resources Department. Item four K, act on one-year renewal to the term contract for residential refuse and recycling containers for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Departments. Item four L, act on three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for emergency and non-emergency response for hazardous, non-hazardous, universal, and biohazardous waste for the Environmental Management and Sustainability Departments. Item four M, act on the use of cooperative contract for a 20-month term contract with four years of renewal options for grit spiral augers and related parts for the Water Resources Department. Item four N, act on dollar limit increase to the use of cooperative contract for six months for overhead crane and hoist testing, maintenance, and repair for the Water Resources Departments. Item four O, act on contract for the police evidence facility, pre-construction services, and construction manager at risk. This project is funded by the 2018 Authorized Public Safety Bonds. Item four P, act on contract for re-roofing buildings two and three at 708 West Baseline Road Project. Item five A, act on resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into grant award for the Office of Justice Programs to accept grant funds for the police department's forensic services division for DNA capacity enhancements and backlog reduction. Item five B, act on resolution is sequencing a three-foot public utilities easement located at 1305 North Ovocato. Covoto? I don't even know how to pronounce that.
You got it.
A-V-O-C-A, to accommodate construction of a new storage shed. Item five C, act on resolution regarding ZON21-00788 for property located east of Val Vista Drive on the south side of University Drive. Site plan reviewed to allow for multiple residence development. Item six A, introduction of ordinance amending sections 10-4-4 and 10-4-5 of the Mesa City Code to establish a speed limit of 40 miles per hour on Warner Road from west of 80th Street to Ellsworth Road and a speed limit of 35 miles per hour on Warner Road from Power Road to 1,560 feet east of Power Road and from Ellsworth Road to East Mark Parkway, as recommended by the Transportation Advisory Board. Item six B, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON21-00928 for property located north of McDowell Road and east of the 202 Red Mountain Freeway. This is to modify the existing planned area development overlay to accommodate an increase for lot coverage on individual lots. Item six C, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON21-00291 for property located west of Gilbert Road on the north side of McKellips Road. Rezone with the planned area development overlay to allow for small lot, single resident developments. Item six D, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON21-00288 for property located east of Greenfield Road and on the north side of Main Street. Site plan reviewed to allow for large-scale commercial recreation center. Item six E, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON21-00796 for property located west of Greenfield Road and north of Baseline Road to allow for industrial development. Item six F, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON21-00588 for property located north of Pago's Road on the east side of Sausama Road. Rezone with the bonus intensity zone overlay, council use permit, and site plan review to allow for development of a new hotel. Item six G, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON21-00746 for property located west of Power Road on the north side of Elliott Road. Rezone with the planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for industrial development. Item six H, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON21-00790 for property located west of Ellsworth Road and north of Ray Road. Rezone to allow for an industrial development. Item seven A, introduction of ordinance regarding ZON21-00278 for property located north of Brown Road on the east side of Power Road. Rezone with the planned area development overlay and site plan review to allow for development that includes food trucks. Mayor and Council, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. King. Do we have any requests to speak on an item on the consent agenda?
Only the ones I provided for seven A.
Okay. So we do have cards to speak on seven A. So if that was read, that's being removed from the consent agenda. I see we have a motion made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna, for approval of the consent agenda. Please vote. Thank you. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item seven A. This is zoning case 21-00278. It involves the 1,300 to 1,500 blocks of north Power Road on the east side and the 6,800 block of east Hobart Street on the south side and including the 6,800 block of east Halifax Drive, both sides, located north of Brown Road and east of Power Road. This would rezone the property from office commercial to single residence 35 and to neighborhood commercial with the planned area to development overlay and site plan review. This request will allow for development that includes food trucks. So just so the, thank you. We see the signs. The impact has been made. Just, I know we've got a lot of folks from the neighborhood here. So if you don't mind, let me just tell you where we're at procedurally on this case, okay? Our city charter requires, we're anxious for the community to have lots of notice when we have issues that we think people would like to hear about, like zoning cases that impact your neighborhood. So as a result of that, the process that our city government follows is we introduce an ordinance and then we set it for a hearing at the following meeting. So the agenda, the item that's on our agenda today is not to vote on this zoning case, rather it is, should we have a hearing on this zoning case at our next meeting? So no votes will be cast by the city council on the merits of this zoning case tonight. Again, the issue is, will we convene a hearing at our next city council meeting to discuss the merits? So I know there's a lot of folks that have turned in cards. We're going to hear from everyone who wants to speak tonight, but I just want to kind of help manage your expectations as to what happens through this process, okay? So we'll just get into it and start hearing from the residents that are here to discuss this case.
Mayor, if I might, it's actually, it'll be not on the next council meeting, but the following one. It'll be on the February, the idea was to introduce it and it would come back on February 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for making that correction. So there is another meeting tonight, two weeks from tonight. That's not where this will be voted on. It will be the first meeting in February, Monday night, February the 7th. I have two stacks of cards that have all indicated that they wish to defer their time to a spokesman. And the first stack is, wants David Sloan to come up and speak on their behalf. Is Mr. Sloan here?
I'm sorry.
Did someone let Mr. Sloan know that he should come in? I'm sorry? Okay, thank you. The next stack I have is a group that wants Mr. Sparks to speak on their behalf. So let's begin with Mr. Sparks.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Ted Sparks. I live at 7010 East Halifax in Mesa. I'm not going to complain about the invasion and chaos caused by the ongoing unauthorized food truck operation, as there are many other residents.
Mayor, can you just slide over a little bit to pick up the mic so that we can make sure it's being broadcast? Thank you, sorry.
Okay. I would hope that the council realizes that this application is not about food trucks. It is about preserving the integrity and nature of our neighborhood. Let me begin by describing the area contained within the U-shaped configuration of Halifax, 71st Street, and Hobart that can only be entered or exited from Power Road on the west. It consists of 37 homes on 51.8 acres of RS35 zone land. The minimum lot size is 35,000 square feet, with most homes having one to three acres. Several factors have resulted in our residents becoming more familiar with each other than those in the average neighborhood. The physical nature of the neighborhood makes it a single block, so it is ideal for taking a walk around. Some of us do that daily and others just periodically, but the result is the waving at infrequent cars that might pass and the stopping to chat that is usually only found in planned communities. When a zoning change for the multi-story self-storage building was proposed for the corner of Power and Halifax, the community was able to effectively become organized into what became a two-year opposition campaign with significant attendance at neighborhood meetings with city officials, council members, and ultimately a site plan review board with a project judged, was judged to be totally inappropriate for the neighborhood. I mention this as background so that you will realize that this is a cohesive group of neighbors that is very interested in maintaining the essence of what we have. Over the course of the past 13 months, since the initial invasion of the food truck patrons, several myths and untruths have been skillfully circulated on social media and public hearings by the owners and their superstar attorney, Mr. Lake. Myth number one, they allege that most of the complaints are coming from one person and not the neighborhood. Mr. Craig Vassler, who is present here, has been vilified and harassed by the owners for actions he has taken on behalf of the neighborhood. Mr. Vassler is a very civic-minded neighbor whom we are fortunate to have looking out for our interest. He keeps us informed of any inquiries he makes and sends his copies of all correspondence. He even watches Channel 11, so we don't have to. It may seem like only one person to the owners, but we can easily have each complaint or inquiry filed by 25 or 30 additional neighbors if they would prefer. Myth number two, these owners complain about every project proposed by the owners. In 2008, when Mr. Darling proposed changing the two one-acre lots on either side of Halifax from RS35 to OC so that he could construct a complex of single-story medical and office buildings similar to the complex that wraps around the Shell Station and the Sonic at Power and Brown, the neighborhood came out in favor of the project. We look forward to walking to our dentist or insurance broker or our personal trainer. The rezoning was granted by the city but was never built. While economic conditions at that time may have discouraged building, it seems like the original plan would still have merit in today's economy. It was owned RS35 when purchased by Mr. Darling. We encouraged a change to OC in anticipation of the plan submitted by Mr. Darling. We did not, we did not buy next to, nor are we living next to now, land zone for food trucks. This serves myth number three, which says it serves the neighbor's right to have bought next to commercially zoned property. Quite the contrary, Mr. Darling bought RS35 zone land adjacent to RS35 zone land and is now seeking to change his zoning for the second time and also seeking to change RS35 zoning. Myth number four, allowing this operation to continue is a vote in favor of small businesses. Although the owners have testified that a significant majority of their income comes from the rental of the fire pits, a significant majority of their income comes from the rental of the fire pits, there is no evidence that any of that revenue is shared with the small business food trucks that bring in 100% of the customers. In addition, the food trucks may be further exploited by being charged a percentage of their receipts reported to be anywhere between 10% and 40%. Also, the owners now compete with their customers by operating their own, I assume rent-free, food truck on an every-night basis. I think as these options at other locations become, as options at other locations become available, many of these small business trucks may indeed move on. The approximate four acres recently acquired by Mr. Darling and Mr. Johnson at the corner of Power and Hobart is owned RS35 and will accommodate four 35,000-square-foot lots where new homes are anticipated to be integrated into our neighborhood. These lots will be highly sought after by home buyers wanting large lots with horses allowed. The property was owned by the Love of Christ Church across the street for many years and was never available for development. When the church decided to sell the property in 2019, it was quickly purchased by a Mesa resident for the purpose of building a single-family home for his use. When Mr. Darling and Mr. Johnson approached this buyer last year in hopes of renting the westernmost 100 feet of the former church property for additional parking, his plans had changed and facing a due date of a hard money loan, he agreed to sell the entire four acres to them for $900,000. Public records show that Mr. Darling and Johnson through their LLC obtained a $750,000 loan from Fidelity Bank and put $150,000 down payment to acquire the four acres of RS35 zone land. They have subsequently been quoted by friends as saying that even if food trucks don't work out, they will still have the land. They are probably right not to worry while they paid about the current market value for the property with its RS35 zoning. One of our neighbors just sold a lot adjacent to his property, a one-acre lot for $250,000, probably the last one available in the neighborhood. If they could succeed if they could succeed in obtaining alternative zoning, a sale could bring in two or three times what they paid. Mr. Darling recently told me that he expected when all is said and done that we would see apartment buildings on their entire parcel. Since the public records reveal that their $750,000 loan is due in its entirety in June of next year, they must have some exit strategy planned that coincides with that date. Mr. Johnson and, Mr. Darling and Johnson have a terrible history with their malicious actions toward our neighborhood, including removing a line of eucalyptus trees that had completely shielded a neighbor visually from Power Road just because a survey showed them, and showed the trees and their irrigation to be on the food truck property. This was done in one day without notice to the neighbor. They also refused to direct their temporary light towers away from the neighborhood. Intentionally, they also intentionally redirect traffic through our neighborhood when one of their lots fills up and using their own food truck to continuously dump liquid waste on our streets. Let me repeat that last one. They continuously use their own food truck, the one they own, driven by them to come drive our streets and dump their waste. We have witnessed them doing this maybe 15, 20 times. We have videoed it at least three times. They have recently quit going down our street to dump it. They now go down to Brown and dump it on Brown on the way home to Val Vista. They seem to have been, they seem to have been bad actors toward the city as well as continuing to operate in an unregulated and non-conforming manner for 13 months. Appealing it is not a park ruling, even though no unbiased person could possibly call their vacant lot with rental fencing a park, taking that appeal to Superior Court, causing the whole project to be classified as in litigation and somehow immune from enforcement. There is no apparent reason to award this behavior with special treatment. They have done nothing to earn. We helped them to get their current zoning and now they want to take ours. On behalf of the residents of this unique neighborhood, we beg you to please don't let them do it. Once you take our zoning, it is gone forever. And although future changes would require council approval, that won't give us back our zoning. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. And again, I'll note that Mr. Sparks, that several people had deferred their times to Mr. Sparks. All right, Mr. Sloan. Again, there's a large stack of your neighbors that have designated you as their spokesman as well.
Lucky me. Okay. Council members, thank you. And thank you for having me here. Ted did a great job of really lining this out. I'm going to try and go through and hit some bullet points and hit them a little bit more quickly. Hopefully it won't take that much time. Let's be clear about something. I assume that you've all seen the property, right? This is, it's got a Power Road address, but far more frontage of the property is on Halifax and Hobart. It's not a Power Road location. It doesn't have any exits or entrances on Power Road. It's a mid-block parcel. And clearly, the activity that has been going on there and the activity that's planning to be expanded on there is a very high volume, you know, retail activity. And so to have that mid-block in a residential neighborhood nestled in a residential neighborhood, I think is significant, right? The, another thing I'd like to point out, the traffic and the parking studies, they call for 227 spaces. One of them says 240 spaces if you can park on the lawn. There's a few different numbers, you know, I wasn't able to get something specific. I've got photos and videos of more than 260 cars parked in the lot, you know, just on a Friday night. So they're underparked. They're just underparked as it is now. And that's with the current level of development. So throw a bunch of money at it, make a bunch of improvements, presumably a lot of that money is going to be spent to marketing, promoting of special events. That parking problem is going to get worse, not better. Just as a side note, that flows over into street parking. I personally believe that they could care less if their enterprise requires parking on the street. My reason for that is, one day I put traffic cones out in front of, you know, the house in order to help encourage people and understand, hey, there is a parking lot. You can just go ahead and use it. I didn't really get a chance to see how that worked because Mr. Johnson personally drove over my cones and parked on top of them and then said, it's public street, anybody can park here. That's, that's just how it's been going. We've got an ownership group that consistently ignores the rules. They graded that property illegally without a permit. They were red-tagged by the City of Mesa. They finished, right? In lieu of the red tag, they violated the stop-work order and just went ahead and finished the zoning. You guys, that's a City of Mesa thing? You guys can check that out. You don't have to take my word for it. I got an email from Mr. Lake, December 16th. He said that in the effort of, you know, trying to appease the neighbors and do the right thing, they were going to move the food trucks to the north so that they'd be away from, right, where my house is, right? And just to make sure you guys are clear, I'm right next door. I share a property land on two sides. So by moving all of the food trucks north, they would, they would move that towards the church and away from most of the residential activity. It's a good idea, right? If somebody really wanted to get along with the neighbors, absolutely that's the kind of thing that you would do. That still hasn't happened, right? I just drove by there on my way this morning. So this is something that we've talked about for, I don't know, I've made that suggestion, you know, personally, face-to-face to Mr. Darling within 30 days of them closing on their new property. Hey, if you've got it and you're going to use it, move the bulk of the activity there. And if you want to prove that that's going to work better, go ahead and do that. They haven't. I got that commitment from Mr. Lake on December 16th. They're still as far south as they could possibly be. I took pictures just as I was driving by because it's just, it's audacious. They said that they would move the generators away from their fence line. Last week I had generators five feet from my fence, right behind their trailer, right? Not food truck, not food truck trailers, Dave and Ray's trailer that they operate, excuse me, for the park. The idea that they're going to address the lighting concerns, it looks like one of the lights, I will say for sure, the light at Power and Halifax has been adjusted somewhat. I still have lights shining through my windows on three sides. If somebody wanted to appease that, if somebody wanted to work with that, they have my phone number, they have my email address. There's a way to resolve problems collaboratively and pretending to one person that you solved a problem for another person without actually contacting that person or making any effort, right? That's not how you do it. You guys know how to solve problems with other people. They know how to solve problems with other people. I know how to solve problems with other people. That's, that's not what has been happening here. In, in further negotiations, right, we've, we met with the, I'm sorry, we've been, I've been in this room a whole bunch of times. I'm getting, getting comfortable here. We had planning and zoning, right? So at the planning and zoning meeting, the good neighbor policy came up a bunch. I think that came up a bunch last week in your study session as well, right? It's an important thing. So we've been trying to work with, with them. I hired an attorney and we've been trying to work with Mr. Lake on that. Those, those conversations have, you know, basically come to a stop. I, Mr. Lake called me childish and he called me creepy. And there hasn't been any follow-up on any of that since December 16th, right? The comment specifically, he can, he can speak to him as well. The childish was because I have a sign on my house that expresses my dissatisfaction with living next to the food park. And the creepy was because I took a time-lapse video of the traffic going in and out of their parking lot and up and down the street. So if that's childish and creepy, so be it. It's certainly not the way to build bridges. In that email as well, they said that they were going to get back with us as far as the enforcement. enforcement concept. That was a huge point from planning and zoning. And when it comes to, you know, the good neighbor policy, right? The good neighbor policy, if you've read the documents, they draft it, they get to say what it says, it's entirely up to them, right? It's arbitrary, it's unenforceable. So even though all of this emphasis gets placed upon that document, there's a couple of things. One is it doesn't, it's not worth the paper that it's written on, right? Unless there's something that substantiates it. And they've been completely unwilling to entertain that. And, lost my train of thought, I hate it when that happens. What was I talking about? Good neighbor policy. Here we go. And then, so how is it enforceable and what does it contain? Everybody knows that it's an important document, but what does it really mean? Some of the things that have happened, right? You would think that these guys would be on their best behavior. Been doing this for a year. There's clearly been issues. You would think that if they really wanted your support, they would be on their best behavior and they would be doing things that would make me less likely to be up here speaking in the way that I am as opposed to more likely. So the, putting a DJ booth 25 feet from my bedroom window, right? You don't have to take my word for it. Go on YouTube, watch the video, right? I've sent it to, if not all of you, most of you. I'll make sure to send that link to you before the night is out, make sure you get a chance to see it. Dumping their corn dog truck, right? And not just dumping it once, but dumping it so many times that people thought, let's go out there with a camera and see this because who's going to believe this? And then when they, when that video was posted and they got in trouble claiming that, oh, it was a faulty valve, right? They went on next door and they, Dave Darling posted up there, it was a faulty valve. You know, you can't trust those parts, they come from Mexico. And so we got it fixed, won't be a problem. Two weeks later, they're doing it again, right? They're still doing, I don't know if they were doing it the whole time, but they certainly got caught on video again. A month later, they got caught on video again, right? And this is after being publicly outed on it and being spoken to by Maricopa County Health Services. So, good neighbor? That's for you guys to decide, right? Good place for a food park? That's for you guys to decide. I think that you know how I feel. I think I've covered all of the points that need to be covered. I very much appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. I do have four other cards on this topic. One is from Joanne Bade, who indicates she does not wish to speak, but she does oppose the zoning. And then I have three other cards, and I'm not sure if these individuals want to speak or not, but I want to give them that invitation if they, if they'd like to. Stephanie Elliott? Ms. Elliott, would you like to speak?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. And Jay Wickstrom?
No, it's open, yes.
Okay, thank you. Christine Good?
No.
Okay, thank you. We had, hopefully, those of you who are here witnessed our study session last Thursday where we kind of did a deep dive on this and had a lengthy presentation from staff. Mr. Smith and Mr. Brady remind me, I think the plan here is that we, this will be set for hearing on February 7th and in the interim, that there's still work on the good neighbor policy that is going to take place or that there's some additional documentation that might be filed prior to the February 7th hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. We're working on the development agreement or a draft of the development agreement. And we, if you didn't see that study session, we put some of those deal points on the PowerPoint. And also, a follow-up, my understanding was what these neighbors did have an attorney or had a representative that was also working on the good neighbor policy and drafting and providing response back to the property owner, the food park property owner regarding the good neighbor policy. And so, so really, the drafting and the response back is between those two. But if people look at that Thursday study sessions, you'll see that really, we're trying to cover many of those topics within the development agreement. So to the extent that they are or not in the good neighbor policy or are or not enforceable within the good neighbor policy, they will be within the development agreement. And also, the concept, obviously, I broached, I talked about the concept of, encouraged the concept of having specific performance as the remedy within that good neighbor policy, which seems that it could be added.
Okay, so when will that additional verbiage be prepared, be ready for the neighbors to review and see if they feel it's adequate or not?
Well, Mayor, can I just quickly, we invite them first to go look at that. It's the PowerPoint that's out there, it's attached to this item on the agenda. You can pull it up and you can see on page 16, it provides the key topics that would be covered in the development agreement. And so our hope is that we come to some agreement with the property owner before we post this meeting and maybe a week before so that the residents can have a chance to see what that development agreement looks like. However, if we, the city staff, are not able to reach an agreement, reach an agreement on the development agreement before that time, before it shows up to council on the February date, then the staff will be recommending against this item.
Okay. And speaking for myself, if that information's not up and available to the neighborhood prior, with sufficient time for them to review it and then respond to it at the February 7th meeting, I, for one, would move for a continuance so that, to give the neighborhood adequate time to see what is being proposed. Mr. Sloan, did you wish to respond to that?
Do you need me to have the microphone?
Yes, please. Mr. Sloan raised his hand, so I just want to make sure he...
No, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, so the idea that there's an attorney working actively with their attorneys, that attorney is working with me, so the comments that I made, as far, we haven't heard anything back from the middle of December. We've met with city staff, they've assured us that we will, they were hoping that we would, we were expecting we'd have some draft of the development agreement?
Well, so let's be clear, because I think we're kind of maybe the two get confused a little bit. There is a, one, a development agreement, which if you look and see, it talks about hours of operation, traffic management, and parking, noise mitigation, lighting, prohibited uses. That would be, now, it has to be agreed upon by the property owner and the city, and it becomes enforceable by the city, that development agreement. The good neighbor policy is separate, so that's between the neighbors and the developer. Now, we could include that as part of an exhibit to our development agreement if there is an agreed-upon good neighbor policy. But we're not trying to suggest, you know, what yours is, we're just telling, from the city staff perspective, we are trying to get to a development agreement.
Yep.
That would be brought to council, which would be enforceable by the city. The good neighbor policy would, as you said, there has to be comfortable that you all have opportunity to enforce that. The difference, we think, the good neighbor policy really gives you contact information if something's, the development agreement is kind of a very legal kind of sized document and addresses those issues, many of which we think the community would be concerned about. The good neighbor policy would be more kind of a, I don't know, guys, well, contact information, do you manage with the development right there? But again, that's only if you come to an agreement with one, so.
And so just to be clear, right, the idea that there, I appreciate that, that makes it very clear. The development agreement is enforceable, not by us, but by the city. That's important to us, right? It needs to be enforceable by somebody because the situation that we've been in with has been unenforceable, anything, with people who have been reluctant to volunteer to do the right thing.
Right. And that's the advantage of having a zoning case and a development agreement. It finally gives us leverage to enforce a lot of the concerns that we've shared and that you've, the neighbors have shared for the last year.
So is there, can we connect with the city, right, through you, I assume?
The city attorney's office, yep.
Yep. How would we make sure that you're understanding what it is that's important to us as the residents?
Well, I think the best conversation we've had, Mayor, it's okay, I'm sorry, this dialogue...
Yes, yeah, please.
Is continue working with Nana.
Okay.
The planning director, because he's development services director, excuse me, Nana, so that he can feed that information. His staff will be, is the content experts for the development agreement, working with the city attorney's office. So they can share with you the outline of what we've worked on. Again, this is a three, kind of, we're sharing with what we're promoting, but we've got to get an agreement from the property owner. Yep.
Okay. And of course, Mr. Sloan, you'd be back here on February the 7th, and if you feel like you haven't had adequate time or adequate input, or then obviously you'll share that with us in this setting as well on February the 7th.
Certainly.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I do see a couple of hands, I apologize, but it's not a dialogue really. And the issue, again, tonight is, we're voting not on the merits of this case. The presentation obviously did a great job of explaining the opposition to the zoning case. We're not considering today whether or not this is a good or a bad zoning case. We're just setting it for a hearing on February the 7th. That's the vote that we're taking. So for that reason, I'm not necessarily going to invite Mr. Lake up because I assume that he's in favor of setting it for the hearing, and we don't want to do a dive into the merits tonight. That's what the February 7th hearing is for. Sir, if you'd like to speak, I'm sorry, your opportunity has come and gone.
I understand. But why didn't you shut them down when they didn't have a permit for the grading and...
Yeah, this is why we're not going to have this conversation right now, sir. All right, we've had a motion, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman's made a motion for this to be set for a hearing on February the 7th. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, seconded by Vice Mayor Duff. Ms. Spillsbury is ill and she will be voting by text message. She was here for part of the meeting but fell ill, and so she's been monitoring the meeting from a different room. So please cast your vote. Let me check, and Ms. Spillsbury has notified me by text that she votes yes. All right, the motion passes at six to one with Mr. Luna voting no. So again, folks, this will be on our agenda for February the 7th. That is subject to change. As Mr. Brady was indicating, there's still things that need to happen from our staff's perspective before this is ripe for consideration. Votes tonight do not reflect support for this zoning case. Votes tonight only reflect that we are going to discuss the merits of this case on February the 7th or at a meeting thereafter.
And Mayor, just quick, you said it, but I just want to assure the residents, our intention is to get you copies of that development agreement in advance of the meetings so you have a chance to look at it and give us your input.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to having you. Feel free to, if you don't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, we understand you won't be rude if you quietly exit the building. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item 8A. This is a presentation, an overview, accepting the City of Mesa's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as the CAFR, for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. I believe we have a staff presentation.
I'm here to do a quick presentation on the overview of the results of our 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. With me is Sandy Construm. She is a principal with Captain Austin Allen, who did the, the firm that did the audit this year.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the audit results. Irma's going to get into a little more detail, but as we've discussed in the past, when we come out and do the city's audit, there's a number of items that we look at, a number of procedures that we actually perform. One of them is the actual audit of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We also do some federal compliance testing related to the Single Audit Act. We look at some housing and urban development reports, highway user revenue, compliance testing, and also, we look at your annual expenditure limitation report. So tonight, as of the end of December, we completed our audit of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the compliance over the highway user revenue funds. We're currently finishing up the rest of the compliance issues related mostly to the federal, your federal programs, as we were waiting on some compliance regulations related to those. So for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, we issued an unmodified opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion. We did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to the financial statements themselves. Your financial statements are prepared in accordance with government or generally accepted accounting principles and also governmental accounting standards, statements are followed as well. So that's my part of the presentation, I guess. I'll let Irma get into a little bit of the details.
Yeah. Okay. I wanted to highlight the city's revenues for 2021. The city's overall revenues increased by $113.2 million. The increases came primarily through federal funds that we received, $30 million in extra federal funds that we received, an increase in sales tax revenues, and also increase in charges for services. We also wanted to highlight our, the total assets for the city increased to $4.9 billion. The biggest component of our assets are the capital assets, which is the city's infrastructure, buildings, property that the city constructs and owns. Cash and investments is another component, and also other assets, which are primarily our investment in joint ventures. The increase between 20 and 21 was primarily in cash and investments. The city's liabilities also increased to $4.3 billion. The liabilities are our long-term obligations, which are either revenue bonds or geo-bonds, and our pension and other post-employment benefits, liabilities that we are required to record. And that's the high-level presentation.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate this. This was, there's a state law that mandates that we have this presentation during this meeting, and I'll just express my appreciation as the mayor for the good work that was done on the CAFR this year and really for the good management that it represents by Mr. Brady and his team. So, Council, any discussion on this item before we vote? Vice Mayor?
I don't have a discussion point, but I just wanted to reiterate for the public out there, this is not the presentation. This is a very high-level summary, and the entire presentation is a couple hundred pages. There is this executive summary at the beginning of it, and I suggest anybody who's interested with that executive summary, it gives you an overview of how we're doing in the city. So don't take it like this isn't enough. There's probably more information than you possibly want to know, but I believe the executive summary is worthwhile for anybody interested, and there is the 200-page report available online. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or discussion on this item? All right, is there a motion to accept the, I mean, I'm not going to call it the CAFR, I'm going to call it the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Is there a motion to accept the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report? Thank you, Mr. Luna, for making that motion, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please cast your votes. Ms. Spillsbury also votes, and she votes yes. So that passes unanimously. Thank you. Final item on our agenda is items from citizens present. As our agenda indicates, we, under this agenda item, hear from three speakers for three minutes each. Now, I know that there's a group here that has a message that you want to share with our city council. I have had a total of six cards submitted. I'm going to invite the first three cards. I don't know any of you, I don't, you know, I'm not playing favorites, so I'm just going to take the first three cards that are on top. You'll have three minutes each to speak. And I apologize to the three who won't get to speak. We certainly invite you to come to our next meeting and you'll have that opportunity, hopefully, at that time. So we'll begin with Jolene M. Armagost. Welcome, Jolene, you have three minutes.
Yes, the Mesa Gardens trailer parkers trying to evict us for like no reason. My mom's been there for 18 years and they just kicked her to the curb. She's like 76 years old, and my stepdad, he just came from the nursing home and got to come home, and he was there three weeks, and they told him they had to move in 10 days. So I don't think that's relieving, right?
Okay, thank you very, thank you for coming.
I believe what we're here for is to let the city council know that Mesa Gardens is treating the residents there in a wrongful manner, and they're doing things illegally. They've been giving people notices without just cause for a quick eviction when they deserve, or the losses they have to get, 180-day notice. We've been given 10-day notices, 90-day notices, 30-day notices, and so on. So they're performing their business in an illegal way, and the city council needs to know about it. know about it.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Elsa Beltran. I'm sorry, David, would you say please pause while we get an interpreter?
Just a moment, I'm going to get an interpreter.
Would you catch us up thus far?
Yeah, so Elsa says she is a single mother of two kids. She's been at Mesa Gardens for 11 years, 11 years? Okay. Adelante.
Okay. Y somos dueños de las trailers en las que vivimos, pero estamos rentando el parqueadero.
They own a couple of the trailers there, but they're renting right now, están rentando? Okay.
Y llegan nuevos, cambió de nuevos dueños y nos dicen que tenemos que salirnos de ahí y desbaratar nuestras trailers y movernos pues a otro lugar.
So the space they have, they're renting it, and they've been asked to leave.
¿Cuánto tiempo? 90 días nos dieron.
Okay, they've been given a 90-day notice to leave.
Tengo entendido que por la ley de vivienda de Arizona son 180 días, pero ellos solo nos dieron 90.
80 días?
180.
180 días. So according to state law, they have 180 days to leave, but they've only been given 90 days.
Y la verdad también no me parece justo que nos digan que nos movamos y desbaratemos, lo único que tenemos para vivir, porque somos personas que estamos ahí porque no tenemos para pagar un lugar más donde ir a vivir.
They don't believe it's just to, it's right to be told to dismantle their living area and go find another place where they can live.
Solo estamos pidiendo que sea conforme a la ley, la manera en la que actúen ellos, y que veamos de las dos partes algo justo, que nos den una explicación por qué tenemos que salir de ahí.
They're just hoping that this whole process can be done according to the law and in a rightful manner.
Es todo, muchas gracias.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beltran. Next, Josh Moyer. Oh, Josh, okay. Well, then, we're going to, we'll hear from one more, because we have some time. Let's hear, I'm sorry?
Should I speak?
What is your name?
Irma Zamora.
Yes, Ms. Zamora, please.
So I'm here because we're just trying to protect affordable housing for everybody. In my case, I decided to return back to school, and my little brother that lives with me, he's going back for his master's degree, so we need affordable housing, because obviously living on the university gets quite expensive. In our case, I have paid rent every single time on time, and I got a notice for 90-day eviction without probable cause in October, which obviously, by the state of Arizona, we are mandated to get at least 180 days. Given the pandemic and the holidays, obviously, it's been hard, we've been looking, everybody has a waitlist, we put in a few offers for housings, for like actual homes, and unfortunately, we haven't been lucky with buying a house. So what I'm asking is just for the council to get involved and just protect those affordable housing for individuals. I've known Mary since she was there, I was a little girl, I've lived there for a while, and Mary was always fun, she was an awesome lady, she always baked goodies for us, she treated everybody with respect, and the fact that she's 76 years old and got an eviction notice to leave without probable cause is not just. She's elderly, she was always riding her bike to the grocery store because it was nearby, they didn't have a vehicle, at least not that I was aware of. All we're asking is for the city of Mesa to get involved and protect the affordable housing. Because in my case, how I'm a student, my brother's a student, we're just trying to afford something more decent, but I know there's a lot of families, single moms with children, single dads with children that obviously can't afford a little more, and getting 10-day notice, 90-day notice was not enough to find something, especially during this pandemic. So I'm asking you guys just to get involved and talk to management, and at least make sure we're offered 180 days before we are evicted, or at least to stay there a little bit longer, because construction in the area started over a year ago, and we never got noticed that once the construction, and it was a little more fancier looking that we were going to get evicted, which, at that point, if you would have told me a year ago, I would have made different plans and probably went to the university and actually went into a dorm and tried to figure out stuff that way. Instead, I thought this was more affordable, but now we're being kicked out, which makes no sense. And all I'm asking is to protect those citizens that need affordable housing, and the students that need it and require it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Irma. Just so you know, this item is not on our agenda today as an action item, so we can't have a discussion with you on this item. I will note, though, that we are very aware of this situation. Your district council member is the vice mayor, and I know that she is familiar with this issue, and I would encourage you to talk directly with her, because she has been involved in this, and I think she'd have some good information for you. All right, that concludes the items on our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.